Good evening and welcome to the May 23 meeting of the Wakefield Board of Selectmen. Can I have a motion and a second, please, to approve the minutes from May 9?
So, moved.
Moved by Paul, second by Peter, all in favor.
Aye.
Great. So now we move to what happens every year, which is the reorganization of our board, where Chair and Vice Chair will change. So I'll take nominations, and we don't need to second the nominations.
Madam Chairman, I would like to nominate Pat Glenn as Chair.
Do you accept?
I do.
Any comments or any other nominations for Chair?
We can declare it closed.
All right, we are declaring the race for Chair for Board of Selectmen closed.
That was a crisis.
All in favor of Pat Glenn being Chair?
Aye.
Aye. And I'm gonna move now, 'cause I'm not Chair anymore.
Take your knee?
You're gonna move right out the door.
I'm gonna keep walking.
Oh. There you go.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. And as my first action as Chair, I will entertain nominations for Vice Chair.
I'd like to nominate Paul Donarco for Vice Chair.
Second.
Is there any other discussion? And so...
Declare it closed.
I declare it closed. Paul, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
They do need to vote.
Could we have a vote, please?
Aye.
All in favor.
In favor of Paul as Vice.
Unanimous.
Aye.
Paul, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
All right.
I look forward to working with you.
Likewise.
Good luck.
Okay. So Steve, as our first matter, public participation.
I do believe, I do not believe there is any, Mr. Chairman.
Excellent. Okay, we have a presentation from Mike Salvatore, President of the Colonel Hachon.
I think actually we have, Mrs. Good is gonna pinch-hit.
Okay, so in Mike's absence?
He's not the President anymore.
It was a coup.
I'm not the Vice President, too. I'm not the President either.
Very good.
My friend, my friend.
Jane Good, our old friend Jane Good.
Yeah, bring everybody in.
Hi.
Good evening.
Jane.
I was kind of excited to be here for the election of the Chair and Vice Chair.
You've never seen one of these before, have you?
No, never before. Thank you for letting us come tonight to talk about our breakfast. I am presently the Vice President. I'm representing the President Cynthia Stone here tonight. She's very shy, and you know I am too, but they twisted my arm, so I came along. With me is Kathy DeCosta and Abigail Russell, who are two of the three co-Chairs of the Hachon House Breakfast, which will be held Tuesday, always the first Tuesday in June, June 7, at the West Side Social Club, 7 to 10 o'clock, catered by House Carl's Catering. A great meal, a great way to start your day. You can get in there, have breakfast, get out, and get to work without any interruption in your day. It's a great time. It's a 75-year-old tradition. It was started on the lawn of a house on Lawrence Street, First Philip Evans Estate, and with the exception of the World War II, it's been held every year since. We used to have it in the tennis court. Some of you may be not be old enough to remember, but we, in the meantime, we've become very sophisticated. We have it catered now. We don't make as much money because we let somebody else do all the work, but it's much, it's a lovely, lovely way to spend a few hours with your friends on a Saturday. A Saturday, I keep saying Saturday. We'd like to have it Sunday on a Saturday, but I don't want it Tuesday morning. The cost is $12. The tickets are available all over town at Uncommon Antiques, Barrett Realty, Smith Drug, and the Medicine Store. Information is available on the Wakefield Community Calendar, the WCAT rolling bulletin board, and the Hachon House website, which is www.hachonhouse.com. The Hachon House is owned by the Town of Wakefield. That's one thing I really wanted to bring up tonight, which is, seems like something that we should all know, but a lot of people in town don't know. We have a membership group that pays $25 a year for dues, and they're our main, this year, our main source of income. We've seldom gone to the town for any money. We have the most beautiful house in Wakefield. We just had it recently painted. It's been down by the lake. We have the most beautiful gardens. Our house is available for rent, for rentals, for occasions, showers, baby showers, wedding showers, but it's just our precious little gift to the Town of Wakefield, who, by the way, owns it. It's beautiful. The gardens have never been so beautiful as they are right now, and the setting, the place to go, we have, we just take great pride in it. Just as an aside, and I know you have business to take care of, but we've become part of the curriculum of the schools. In third grade, the, all the schoolchildren in Wakefield receive a coloring book, which is a story about the Hachon House. And in fourth grade, we have a, what do we call it? A writing, an essay contest, a writing contest, but children are also allowed to present their, if they're not good at writing or don't have confidence in themselves in the writing, they can present some other form of art, art, poetry, et cetera. And in fifth grade, every fifth grader in Wakefield comes to the house next week, on Tuesday and Thursday, to have a tour of the house, and hopefully we are then instilling in these kids appreciation of this piece of property, which is, was built in 1681, the beginning of it, and it's such a valuable, historical, important thing, because these kids are taught that the only way we know what we're gonna do in the future is by knowing what we've done in the past. Really, really important, and the school department has embraced this wholeheartedly, and we're very, very proud of it. So we're doing more than just sitting there looking at our pretty house and enjoying it and going to breakfast, having a breakfast. So I think I've covered everything. Have I?
Haven't covered everything.
And I just am so appreciative of this opportunity to sell our tickets. $12. We've never, we haven't gone up for years. I keep pressing for them to go. The Democratic Town Committee breakfast was $15, and I keep saying, "Go up, go up," because people will still come, but we're still $12, and it's a darn good way to enjoy yourself. We'd love to see the new Selectmen there, because it's an opportunity to...
My aunt would have my head if I missed this.
Yes, she would, exactly.
Jane, what time does it start?
She's very prominent in our plans. I also have tickets tonight, if anybody's interested, but I know you have a business, you know, we have a meeting, so I'll grab you at the door.
Jane, just one question.
Sure, Peter.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Just kidding. What time does it actually start on Tuesday, the 7th?
Seven.
7:00?
7:00 AM.
It is 7:00, okay.
7:00 AM to 10:00 AM.
Okay.
We're all home taking a nap at, by noon today. We're there at 5:30, along with Peter. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Jane. Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the Board, or no? Thank you very much.
We're very well, we're always supported by the Selectmen, and we used to have a huge outpouring of teachers and school department people, but school starts so early now, it's impossible for them to get there, so...
Well, I want to echo your comments about using the house for private functions. We used to have an annual Christmas party there every year. It's a great setting.
It is a great setting.
It's a lot of fun, and I hope that, you know, the townspeople take advantage, so...
I hope so, too. It's inexpensive, and it's just, it's just, it has everything. It's so historically important. I was, when I was, when Jim was, now I'm really getting personal, but this is the last thing I'm gonna say. But Jim was a Selectman for the first time, which was in the 70s. I got invited to be a member, not on the Board of Directors, but just a member. I was so excited. Little did I know, everyone in town bought into membership. I was so thrilled to be part of it, and I don't think I'm particularly historically active or interested, but I am so proud of that house, and I thank you so much for letting us voice our interest and get some people to come tonight. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
As usual, I talk over my phone.
That's okay. The next matter is a request from William Lee regarding a small granite marker for John DiComandria, Coach Deek, the former track coach in high school. Steve?
Sure. I was fortunate enough to run for Coach Deek back in the 70s. I'm not so sure how fortunate he was that he was that I ran for him, but I did run for him in the 70s. Coach John DiComandria was the cross-country coach for the boys and girls' cross-country teams for 47 years in Wakefield. He won many, many state and Middlesex League championships. In fact, I think the cross-country team went undefeated for the entire 70s, so quite a feat. But in any event, he also ran the Boston Marathon pad a number of times as well. Right now, Coach Deek is unfortunately in tough shape. He's 88 years old. He no longer really is in good health, and the school committee voted the other night based on an outpouring of the community to have a marker that's in your packet placed on the other side of the track from where the Beasley marker is, basically paying, you know, some homage to John DiComandria, Coach Deek, teacher, coach, friend, mentor to generations marathon front runner. So where it is under the charter, the Board of Selectmen also has some authority over the schools, you know, the school properties. They would need to have the Board of Selectmen approval to place that marker there.
I will entertain a motion on this.
Move to place Coach Deek's marker at Beasley Oval.
Move to approve on the table, or the second. All in favor?
Aye.
If I could just add something?
Sure.
When I had my hair replaced in February, Coach Deek was in the room across from me, having some really significant surgery, but his mind is incredibly sharp, and his spirits were so good, and I hobbled over there, and we chatted about, I never ran track, but I had good friends that did, and he just, his recollection of all those players, it was a wonderful conversation. So his health is absolutely not great, but he was still spry and big smile on his face. So I think this will be wonderful.
That's great. Okay, motion was approved unanimously. Next up, Father Coughlin.
Yes, Father William Coughlin is celebrating his 50th anniversary as a priest, his 50th anniversary of ordination. There is going to be a Mass at Blessed Sacrament on the 29th at 11:00 AM, followed by a luncheon, which I will be happy to represent the Board at, Mr. Chairman, if you wish. Father Coughlin probably married more people and baptized more babies and confirmed more kids in Wakefield than any other priest probably in the history of the town. He was at St. Joseph's from 1970 to 1980, and then returned back in 1990 to present as pastor of Most Blessed Sacrament. So I think that the parish did reach out to me, and I think it's something that is worth noting, and I have our normal proclamation from the Board.
Excellent. Steve, that'd be great if you could represent us.
Yeah, you could do it.
Excellent. Next up, we have a request from Mary Reiman to accept and expend a gift in the amount of $80 for the World War II Memorial in honor of Jim Murphy's birthday with thanks. So...
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous. License permits and approvals for the farmer's market contract.
Call Wendy Dennis up, Mr. Chairman, and discuss the farmer's market with us.
Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome. You're out of practice, I hope.
I am, thank you. Good evening, Wendy, how are you?
I'm good, thanks.
You looking forward to another season?
Yes, I am. Getting ready, it's gonna be the busy time.
Yeah.
I guess to start with, I do have the contract that Tom Mullen has seen, and it is signed by our current president and current treasurer. That needs to be signed, and I'm not quite sure if, does anyone have any questions? I know some of the newer Board people, I don't know if you have any questions about the farmer's market, or...
I've frequented many times.
Yeah, that's a good one. So again, we're looking forward to a new season.
Are there any new elements in the contract that either you or Tom wanted to discuss, or?
Nothing's changed.
Pretty much the same as...
Very much the same as in past.
Formally approved, the form, so without any further ado, I will accept a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract as presented.
Second. Motion to approve, and a second on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so voted.
And, Mr. Chairman, that requires your signature. You want to pass that up, Wendy?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay. Does Wendy need to stay up for the next two?
She'd.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Aaron App Sellers LLC liquor license for the farmer's market. Is this the same one as last year?
Yes. You may have noted, Chelten Orchard's, well, their winery did burn down last year, so they're not making wine, and unfortunately, they aren't gonna be back this year, that is one difference. Their Patty and Nate are 78 years old or so and need to stay on the farm on Saturdays this year, so we're very sad about that, but Aaron App Sellers, and also next on the line there is Down East Cider, both started last year, and they did spectacularly well. It was, they were very popular. I think a lot of people came and learned about the market because they heard about, you know, they were familiar with these vendors or heard about them, and thought it was pretty cool to be able to pick up a bottle of wine to have with that steak or whatever else they were getting, or with their vegetables. And so they both did really well, so I'm hoping that once again you'll approve having them have permission to, as an, what it is, is that the farmer's market is considered an agricultural event because we have a certain ratio of farmers versus other vendors, and the Massachusetts law does say that, that produce, local producers can sell at agricultural events directly to consumers. That's how it all works there.
Got it.
And that's all stated in the contract.
Any discussion on the Aaron App Sellers matter?
No.
There being none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the liquor license from Aaron App Sellers to sell their product at the farmer's market.
Second. Motion to approve, and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so voted. Next up, Down East Ciders, as Wendy mentioned, liquor license for the farmer's market.
And I, kind of a fun note, I'm having the two of them alternate, so we have wine one week, cider the next, but they're both going to be there on 4th of July because Aaron App was scheduled, but last year, for the 4th of July, I mean, last year on the actual 4th of July, Down East Cider did so well, they wanted to be back on Saturday before the 4th of July, so they'll both be there on July 4th, July 4th weekend.
Excellent.
I move that we accept a liquor license application from Down East Ciders for the farmer's market.
Second. Motion to approve, and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so voted. Thank you, Wendy.
One more.
Okay, sorry. Oh, sorry, sorry, next one. Yep, okay, farmer's market request, permanent shed for Hall Park. We saved the best one for last.
I did, and I'm not necessarily expecting a decision tonight. I think, I don't know if you had a chance to read what I wrote up, and please excuse the typos that I discovered later, it was a long day when I typed that up. The concern I have, it's more about, it's, well, part of it's because it's, I'm tired from a lot of lifting, but also, of course, the session planning. Currently, I have, you know, four to six tents, a bunch of tables, a bunch of chairs, it's just, my minivan is totally full, and most of it stays in the minivan for the whole 18-week season, because I don't go anywhere, so luckily I can do that. You know, I take a few things out, you know, but that's basically how it works right now, is that whoever is the market manager needs to have a vehicle that all that stuff can fit in and either stay in all season, or they have the strength and the space to unpack the whole thing each week and pack it up again, which would be a lot of work. So I currently can function the way it is, it's a little tough, but I'm hoping that there's some way we could work out to have some kind of permanent, or at least throughout the season, permanent storage. I've looked at, I had a local architect actually was hoping to be able to come up with a reasonably priced and secure, you know, strong building for a reasonable sum, and he, actually, that wasn't happening. I've looked at the sheds that they have at Home Depot, which are fine, and they're attractive. My concern is always the, the more attractive, the more vulnerable, that's the issue, my concern with that. The other thing is, now Melrose does have a storage unit, which of course is not particularly attractive, and theirs is in the parking lot across, right, the train station parking lot, so looks are not the issue. However, it's very durable, and it's not susceptible to vandalism. So I don't know if you had a chance to look, you know, I have, this was the shed I was looking at, and then there's the storage unit, which would be way more secure. And one thought I had was that if we had something attached to it that kids could paint or decorate, both to deter vandals with guilt and also just to make it look prettier. The other issue I did explore was insurance, and my insurance man said that no one's going to insure a shed with stuff in it on town property, so that, there's a little bit of can or room going here, but I was hoping that I could get an indication if, that it would be worthwhile for me to be doing more research on this, or I'm really not quite sure.
Wendy, I wonder if, well, there's two things that come to mind, and I want to hear from the Board, too, but for me, maybe talk, number one, to the Gas and Light, and see if there's any option to store some stuff in their facility.
The issue with that is, in the morning, that would be fine, to be crossing North Ave, but in the afternoon, it's way too much traffic.
Especially on Saturday.
It would be, it would, it needs to be something, another option that some markets do is have a trailer, but then whoever's the market manager needs a trailer hitch, needs to know how to be able to do that, knows how to drive with the trailer, has a place to store the trailer. Although that could be stored at the light company, but again, it's that you're limiting who can be the market manager. I'm not planning to step down anytime real soon, but some, you know, things can happen, and I need to take some Saturdays off this year, maybe. I haven't done that yet, for six years.
So the other, my other suggestion, again, I want to hear from the Board, is I would talk to the DPW Director. Number one, the first thought that comes to mind is aesthetics, but also maintenance free. Who's gonna maintain this, and sheds, you know, deteriorate over time. All right, I'm gonna take a step back. Comments from the Board?
Is...
Go ahead, go ahead.
The storage box makes sense from durability and a lack of vandalism. Is there a way to have something around that, aesthetically, to make the box not as nasty looking? Because I do think having this at that part of the lake wouldn't be great. And the shed looks nice, but I agree that you'd have, you know, nitwits from town and out of town doing things to it, so, but is there something, could you have like trex, trex, like...
Well, I think...
Tensing.
Maybe in that area that's covered between Vets Field and Hall Park, on the other side of the, oh, actually, it's on the same side of the parking lot, I think, there's an area of bushes there. Maybe we could hide a storage locker behind, just, I'm just throwing ideas up there. Tony? Is there currently softball, do they have any porta potty down there? Yes, yes, they do.
They do right now. I'm hoping I, last, originally, I had one each summer, and last summer, oh, I'm mental blocking his name, the gentleman who was coordinating the one porta potty was there, offered to share it, and I still have in my budget to pay my half, I've never been asked to pay my half, but we were both using it, and this year, I see there's two down there, I need to check, I'm gonna call, they're both from Home Depot, so I'll just call from Home Depot and find out who's coordinating them, and hopefully it will work out that if one of them has, is going to keep it down there the whole summer, that we'll pay half of it, rather, I don't think we need a third one down there.
My other question is, what dimensions are you looking at for the shed, or the trailer, or the storage unit?
This shed here is eight by 12, the one, the Home Depot thing, it doesn't necessarily have to be that big, I don't think. Yeah, something like eight to eight by 12, something like that, and again, if we did go with a unit, I do think we could maybe figure out a way of stuff that, to hang on it and paint and have the kids decorate. That's just as a thought to make it look better. I'm just nervous about the shed, a regular shed, just because of deterioration and whatnot, whereas these things are indestructible.
Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wouldn't mind the cube over the shed, because the shed would, you'd have to eliminate all windows.
Yeah.
First of all. Eight by 10 might be small enough, but even at that, I think, though, I'm willing to echo what Ann said, though, if you go with the cube, it has to have some sort of blockage.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Or just like we have to do right now when we ask, when we put dumpsters in.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, they have to be blocked from view. It's something similar to that, so that when you're driving by or you're making, you're not seeing that, the metal, if we go with the metal object. I would prefer the spot closer to the parking area rather than in front of the trees.
The trees would be good for the pretty shed, but not for the...
Right, so, I mean, this, again, this, just for discussion purposes right now, so, I mean, I would probably lean towards the square box, but then again, do you have any dimensions on what that box would come in at?
Probably, I think the one in Melrose is eight by eight, and that seems to work.
Are your tents gonna fit in the eight by eight?
Yeah, I know Cindy's do, she uses the same kind.
Okay, that's fine, okay.
Yeah, something like that, maybe eight by 10. I'd have to really look at, well, I guess, however they all fit in my van, I could use that as a basis, but you still need to have room to maneuver a little bit.
Right, they're expandable, so they have to shrink down to small. Again, that would be my thoughts right now, would probably go with the sturdier one, but it would have to be blocked somehow.
I kind of echo the Chairman's sentiments. I like looking at the light department, maybe the parking lot, or something like that. That way it's, aesthetically, it maintains the park's...
The problem is that would totally...
Would defeat the purpose.
The manpower, I would, I cannot be...
You'd have to have a police detail.
And I can't guarantee you'd get volunteers if you can.
You'd have to have a police detail.
Yeah, so that would, yeah.
So why don't we do this? I'd like you to go back, we filled Steve full of ideas tonight, and I'd like Steve and the DPW Director, Rick Stinson, to come up with some ideas on this, and maybe come back.
Yeah, yeah, like I said, I wasn't expecting a decision this evening, because I'm still trying to figure out what's the best way to do it, and I welcome suggestions and advice, so that's great.
Okay. At least, nothing else tonight, Wendy?
Well, that's it.
Have a great season. Thank you for everything you do for the town.
Oh, well, it's a great town. It's easy to do good stuff here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, next matter on the agenda, personnel and appointments, the police chief contract. Police Chief Smith, would you please take a seat? Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Welcome. I believe Steve has a presentation here?
Yeah, just a couple of quick comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Basically, I want to say that it's an honor to be before you this evening and offer my strongest recommendation for Chief Smith's, what will be his last contract with the, in law enforcement due to mass general laws. At the end of this contract in 2019, Chief Smith will have served 41 years in law enforcement with his last 17 as police chief here in Wakefield. So what has this meant for the Town of Wakefield? We have a police department that is accredited, which means that we undergo a process of best practices, which means that we are much, first of all, we're giving the public much better service, we are much better off in our pursuit of grants, and we are protected from lawsuits because we are following a certain best practices and procedures. We are nationally and internationally recognized, and we are named, we were named as one of the top 10 police forces in the world. Very high standards at Wakefield Police, where training is conducted, and it matters. And in fact, there is recent legislation that the police chief sent me a copy of, where that some federal grants that are sent to police departments, if police departments are not practicing training in certain areas, including crisis intervention strategies, non-lethal tactics, alternative non-lethal methods of applying force, these grants will actually not only cease, but there's a clawback provision, which means that the government will try to... these grants will actually not only cease, but there's a clawback provision, which means that the government will try to get money back from these communities. I don't worry about that here in Wakefield because of what the chief has done. We have a progressive, mission-specific police department. We are on the forefront of tackling some mental health issues where other communities are coming around and emulating us. We have school resource officers in each of our schools, including the vocational school. We have something called a family resource officer, meaning that we have an officer that really is getting down into some of the family situations. I recently had a family situation in another community. They did not have a family resource officer, so we were on our own. Substance abuse coalition, we are leagues ahead of where our other communities are regarding substance abuse and what we're doing as a community to stop this. In fact, one of the members of the coalition from a surrounding town said to me, you are so lucky to have the support of the police chief. We don't have that in our town and we're behind because of it. We have a diverse police force. We have three female officers, two of which have won awards from the state. The police chief is the vice president of the International Association of Chie, of Chiefs of Police. What that means is that, you know, he is nationally recognized and speaks at many, um, conferences across the country, where he is not giving great practices from, from Wakefield. But what I like is he's bringing things back to us. Um, he's meeting with the Obama administration on the twenty-first century community policing. We have a succession plan. We have the envy of other towns and I have communities that are trying to raid my lieutenants and I'm telling them to keep their hands off. Bottom line is we have a top shelf police department and a top shelf police chief. Chief and I talked a lot about this over this last contract about the value that he brings to the town, let alone the safety that we all feel, low crime rate, what that does for our property values, our property values going up. Important to me is the relationships with other town departments, particularly with the schools and the community at large. So how do we compensate somebody for that? It is difficult in municipal government. So I do what I always do is we look around and we see what the market is bearing. And I got to say that many, most, if not all of the communities around us are paying first year, four month, two-year police chiefs that are doing nothing, what our police chief is doing here, are not close to that, and they're paying around the same salary. If we were to extrapolate the police chiefs years out on these gentlemen, they'd be making well over two hundred thousand dollars a year. So I think a correction is in order, particularly with this, uh, to be consistent with his experience and to recognize his excellent, excellence. So I think that we've taken a look at other contracts in this town where we have an initial adjustment and then we go cost of living increases like we do uh, with other of our department heads and not unlike myself. So I'm going to suggest and recommend to the board that for fiscal year seventeen, the police chief be compensated by the adjustment and then a cost of living increase of two and a half percent to a total of one eighty-nine, six twenty-five. That in the second year of his contract would be fiscal year eighteen, one ninety-four, three sixty-five. And his third year of his contract, and that's a two and a half percent cost of living increase. And the third year, one ninety-nine, seven ten, which is a two point seven five percent cost of living increase. I'll tell you that these cost of living increases are less than what the unions got in the last round of contracts. Fiscal year seventeen, this will all be handled within the, in the, in the current budget, um, so there'll be no need for additional appropriation. Let me say on a personal note, what a pleasure it is to work with the police chief over these last, um, eight years of my tenure. I tell him that I, I go to sleep night, at night very calm, what the police officers are doing on Wakefield. And I think for those of you that have come into contact with them in your daily lives, you can see how well-trained, how well-mannered, how respectful they are to the community at large. So I think this is, uh, well-deserved and, uh, well worth it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Steve. And before we go to Chief, uh, Smith, I'd like to hear from members of the board if anyone has any comments. Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief Smith, uh, we've, uh, I've known you now for seven years serving on this board. You've strived to go one step higher each year and you've accomplished, uh, quite a bit in your tenure here, at least while I've been selectman. I have nothing but praise for you. You have a great, uh, department right now. You just can't, I guess you can't say more about what you have done for this community and, um, I, I fully endorse what we are about to give you right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ann.
I also echo it. Um, Chief Smith, I think the professionalism you've brought to the officers is, um, is obvious to anyone who's lived in town, um, their whole lives, like some of us. Everyone from the, the patrol officer to the lieutenants, um, give off an air of confidence, they are professionalism in such, they treat people with such respect. And I think people respond to that and, and behave well often. Um, the sophistication of your training program, I've always been a fan of. I think our officers are trained as good as any in this state or in this region. I know people hear the numbers we talked about that, that seem quite high, but I'm also looking at it as a future. That if, if unfortunately we lose you because of a statutory limitation, um, it's probably not unfortunate from your eyes because I'm sure that, that you've got a lot more to do and exciting things after, um, when you hit that period. But I think it allows us to, to be very competitive, to look for, um, serious candidates, to know that we treated our chief very well. Um, and you, you will have delivered a department that doesn't need much. So I also endorse the contract.
Very well said, Ann, thank you. Anyone else? Tony.
In the short time that I've dealt with you, Chief, you've been very professional. Um, you have left a legacy. When you leave in two thousand nineteen, you will have left a legacy that far supersedes other communities in the area. I want to thank you for your service and I also endorse the contract.
Anyone else?
I don't, actually I haven't known you very long, but the short period of time is, uh, is, uh, very, uh, very telling. A small footnote, uh, to be vice president of the National Association of Chiefs of Police is, is very rare. I actually have a, a small footnote. My day job, I ensure that museum and shooting range in the basement, which you need to get to because they have a machine gun shooting range and, um, no losses in six years that have written it, which is what I like in the day job. But no, to be elected to that position speaks novels. You couldn't get there without having all these folks say great things about you, so I.
Thank you, Pete. And, uh, I, I'll just say, uh, Chief, my eight years on the board, um, you know, I've gotten to know you very well. And, and you've, um, you know, you came here from another community, but you've accepted Wakefield as your home. I know you don't live here, but Wakefield's your home and, uh, you've become a part of the community. Everyone knows you, everyone respects you. And with regard to numbers and, and salary, to me, it's an, it's an investment in the town. And I think it's a good investment, a solid investment, um, that will go, will live beyond the contract, kind of what Ann, uh, was alluding to. It, it's telling of what kind of town we are and how we reward, uh, our employees, uh, that produce. And when I think about negotiating a contract like this, I try to think about, um, trying to calculate what we avoided by having good management, having good training, having, try and put a number on lawsuits, potential lawsuits that we avoided or, you know, cycling through officers or bad behavior by officers or missed opportunities that could cause lives. Um, you know, I think this is an easy decision for me, so. If you'd like to say a few words, feel free before we vote. Or should we vote first?
You don't want to vote and then give them the microphone.
Thank you, Stephen. A little lot of practice.
I know. I don't want to shoot myself in the foot here.
That's right.
Well, um, thank you, members of the board. I, I truly appreciate it. In two thousand and four, I was given the opportunity to come to Wakefield as, as chief. And, and at that time, I made a promise to Mr. Butler, who was the town administrator at that point in time, that we would, um, we'd, we'd move forward every day. And, um, if we didn't move forward, we certainly wouldn't go backwards. But nonetheless, every day we're going to strive and when we've got to one goal, we'll continue on. And I also made a, made a commitment to Mr. Butler that we would also come up with succession, succession plan for the department. So that as time winds down, whatever my time was at that point in time, we would have people lined up who could compete and then hopefully keep the job inside town of Wakefield, or inside the Wakefield Police Department. I've had some great opportunities in this department and I, and I have to say, you don't get here alone. You get here with a lot of help and a lot of partnerships. And I think that, and I know this department works and thrives on partnerships, whether it's with the community, whether it's with the school department, it doesn't matter, the department across the town, um, the board of selectmen. We all, we all work together. I am very proud of our relationship with the schools. When I came here, um, it was a lot different. Uh, we've hired a lot of staff. In fact, we've pretty much turned over the department, um, since two thousand and four. And we've had, um, a great opportunity. Mr. Mayo has been very good to the Wakefield Police Department. He's been very good to me, um, as a chief. And he's been very good to me personally and, and I truly appreciate that. By the, having the opportunity to, um, hire and, and look at the civil service list and promote, in the best eyes of the department, is a huge asset. And I think that shows in the men and women that work in that department every day. They're a great group of people there. They work really hard. Um, they do what's asked of them. And many of them will come to you and say, at the end of the day, all right, chief, what's next? So we're always pushing forward. We will continue to push forward. We have a lot of things to do. There's a, there's a motto that we have in the department and where we work with the leaders of today to train and prepare the leaders of tomorrow. And leadership is a, I think is a huge asset that each and every member of that department has. It's been a tough week for law enforcement. Um, yesterday morning in Auburn, uh, we had one of our own shot dead, shot dead. Three days before that, we had another officer, um, who was found dead in Braycott. Uh, many of us knew that officer. The week before that, we had an officer that many of us knew. In fact, it was an academy classmate of some of our personnel was killed in a motorcycle accident in Lynn. Two or three weeks before that, we had a state trooper who was killed while pulling a car over a, a service area, um, on the turnpike. It's been a tough run for us and, um, but the men and women of the Wakefield Police Department pull together every day. They pull themselves up by their boots and they go out and they do what they're asked to do and they, I think they do it professionally. And, and we couldn't do that without a team, without everybody knowing that we're all pulling and pulling the same, the two of us at the same time. So I, I really appreciate the opportunity to continue on until two thousand and nineteen. I will fulfill, um, the mission that we talked about, that I talked about with Mr. Butler back in two thousand and four and what I've talked about with Mr. Mayo, um, in the last eight or nine years that we've worked together. And, um, I can, I can guarantee you that we will not lay down. We'll continue to work every day. So I am grateful for the opportunity, uh, to fulfill my contract. And sixty-five, I'll ride off into the sunset, but it's a great honor to be able to, um, to do that. And I'm going to chief, get an opportunity to work till the end. And, um, this is a job that I love. Um, it's in my blood. My family's on the fire side. I'm, I'm on the other side, but this is in, uh, this is in my blood. It's something that I, I love to do and I love the, the job that I, that I have. So I want to thank this board sincerely and I, Ms. Mayo, I want to thank you for, you know, your kindness, your guidance. We mix it up every once in a while, but at the end of the day, we understand it's all business. Um, so again, I want to thank you very much for the opportunity.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Um, with no further ado, I'll entertain a motion. Uh, you've all had a chance to review the contract.
Yes.
I move that we approve, um, Chief Smith's contract as presented to us.
Second.
Motion on the floor to approve and second it. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Chief.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay, um, correspondence. Uh, we have Memorial Day scheduled events in your packet. Um, we have an invitation from North Star Realtors. Uh, we have a resignation from Cy Bodie of the Recreation Commission. Is everything okay with Cy?
Everything is fine with Cy. He's moving out of town. It was a very, very well, well-worded, long resignation.
He's a legend. He is a legend. Uh, and a resignation from our friend Anthony Longo from the Recreation Committee. Boy, we're going to need some new members over there.
I think talking with, uh, Mr. McGrath that he's got some excellent candidates. Uh, let's face it, you fill Cy shoes, it's very difficult. You fill my shoes on that board, it's very easy.
We'll try. Okay, uh, any comments from the board tonight? Ann.
I wasn't ready to be first. I like going last with comments. It's been, congratulations on being made chair and vice chair, um, Pat and Paul. I like sitting quietly after the corner. This is kind of nice. Um, but I have, I loved serving the town as chairwoman. And to be treated so well by different, um, groups across the town and asked to represent our board at several different events is an honor always for us. So, um, I have enjoyed my time and, and very happy to pass it on in good hands. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing that I have right now is a request from Relay for Life. They are looking for a speaker for their upcoming relay. Um, I've done it for the last five years and I can't this year. So, um, there, it's a request going out from Relay for Life to have, uh, a selectman. Speaker.
Tony?
Might be good.
Tony might be good.
I will send you a correspondence for, um, the contact person so that, I think it's, uh, Ms. Silver.
Excellent, excellent.
Thank you.
All right, Tony, you have any closing comments?
Uh, a few things. First of all, just a big shout out to the Alvion Street Cultural Exchange. I was there last Wednesday night and Thursday night. I took my daughter and one of her friends to view some of the artwork there. It was fantastic and it's a great idea. Uh, participated in the Wakefield one oh one, uh, the new course orientation for residents last Thursday. And I was just, uh, kind of blown back by the amount of people that were there. Well over a hundred, I think, showed up. So it was, uh, quite a success. And last to my cousin Carolyn Barrett, who's overcome a lot of challenges in life. Um, she graduated B C this weekend. So a big shout out to her.
Congratulations. That's great. That's great. I didn't realize you were cousins. She's a remarkable young woman.
She is.
And a beautiful family. Pete.
Well, welcome, uh, to the new chair.
Thank you.
I have a couple of things, Pat, thanks. Uh, um, there is a lot going on in, uh, the state. And I think that I'd like to ask, um, you to have, uh, Steve Mayo get Senator Lewis, uh, to discuss the marijuana situation. There's going to be a marijuana legalization vote in the November ballot. And I think the board of selectmen, my humble suggestion is we should have a, a coming together and have a statement, have a, an opinion of what we think about that going forward. And I think Steve, if he could, um, help us get Senator Lewis to discuss that in front of us, that would be great. Because I think he's well-versed from, uh, talking to him the other day. I also want to, uh, ditto with Tony, saying the Wakefield Cultural Council was a, a great take. Great artists, great, uh, young, young men and women that were, uh, doing a great job. I guess everyone sold at least one item, which I thought was terrific the day after we went. I think that was, uh, the Thursday. Also, one more thing too, I wanted to, to ask the chair if, uh, it appears, um, the Airbnb situation has come about again. There's, there's five active Airbnbs in the town of Wakefield. I think that, um, if it's okay with you, if I could meet with, uh, Tom Counsel, Tom Owen and Steve Mayo, just to discuss that further.
By all means.
Because we had that come up in the fall and, uh, some of it went away and some of it, um, has blossomed. So, uh, if that would be okay.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you, Pete.
And that's, that's it for me.
Tom, anything tonight?
Uh, just on that matter, uh, the appropriate thing to do, I think, is to have the building inspector issue a letter. I'll write it. Uh, we've done this before. There was a, an Airbnb violator that Peter made us aware of. And I understand that he's, um, seen the light after getting his, his letter. We'll hope that, uh, the others are equally amenable and if they're not, we'll go to the next step.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Steve.
Just a couple of quick things. I want to again thank, uh, Ian Santos for a wonderful year as chair. I appreciate it. Thank you and I know that we'll continue to work together. And congratulations to Pat and Paul on their elections. We certainly look forward to working with both of you. Something very exciting that's happening in Wakefield, um, on June eighth, um, from nine to eleven AM, we will have the, um, North Suburban Planning Council, or really the M A P C, coming in to talk about, um, how do we develop a, kind of a cultural arts, um, district in Wakefield? And how do we develop our toolbox to get that moving? We've talked a lot about that as a board. I think the ACE Center was a great first step, but now we have to kind of develop that district. So that's going to be the Civic Center at, uh, Wednesday, June eighth at nine o'clock. And actually, uh, speaking for the Massachusetts Cultural Council will be our own Greg Liakos on the school committee, so he is going to come in. So we'll have a local hometown boy there and Greg is very excited to help us out as, uh, much as, as he can.
much as, as he can. And that's it, Mr. Chairman, other than that, I will be reaching out to you regarding some of the Memorial Day events and how we're going to cover them as a board.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay, quickly, I just want to wish Betsy, Sharon, and Phyllis Hall good luck. I enjoyed serving with them for several years. Betsy was on the board the entire time I was on, she served honorably, and congratulations to her with her new role as, as town clerk. Pete and Tony, welcome to the board, this is my first meeting with you guys, and, you know, I think we have high hopes for both of you guys, welcome aboard. Ann, great job the last year, you were a great leader, I would have voted, if I could have, for you to do another year. You really did a great job and kept the meetings, and always treated people with class and dignity. So thank you. Paul, congratulations in your new role, well deserved. And on a personal note, I just want to say thank you to everyone who reached out to me over the past two weeks for my family situation, I very much appreciate all the support, thank you. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
No moves, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.